I call the meeting to order. This is a Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, May 21st, 2015, the time is seven o'clock, and ask you to please call the roll.
President Salz.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Lumsden.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Setteby.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Malina.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk.
We have a form, if you please rise for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone, to those of you here and to those watching at home. If you're with us here tonight and you would like to address the board, I would just ask that you be recognized by the president and that you make your comments from the podium so that everybody at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up this evening, our presentations in public comment, and we have a presentation tonight by Kathy Maloney concerning the Village of Riverside as an arboretum. Ms. Maloney.
Thank you, President Salz, trustees, and all residents. My name is Kathy Maloney, and I'm a 209th Scottswood. I'm here today to propose to you obtaining recognition for the Village of Riverside as an arboretum. I sent you some materials in the packet, I'll briefly go over them, and would love to entertain questions. As a backdrop, recently I was talking with a new resident here in Riverside, and he asked, among other things, "Where can I go? I've heard a lot about these native trees. Where exactly do I go in Riverside to find these native trees?" And I thought to myself, "Well, just look out the window, they're right in front of me." But a lot of people don't recognize that we have such a wonderful diversity of trees. Frankly, I did myself. I was fortunate enough to work at the arboretum several years ago, and I realized, hey, we've got a lot going for us right here in our backyard. And so I'd like to propose that we get certification as an arboretum that would recognize our plant diversity, the fact that we are a historic landscape, which is something a little different from some many arboretum, and to recognize how our trees are used in the landscape design promoted and established by Fred of Lowell Homestead. To me, the main benefits of obtaining certification are first and foremost for our own residents. I think that we can enhance the stewardship that our own residents feel towards the green spaces and towards the plants and trees and shrubs when they realize exactly what they are outside the window. I think we'll have better educational opportunities for our residents if we have the certification and associated programs. And I also think that there is potential for increased tourism if we have yet another layer, another reason, for people to come to Riverside. So how would this work, and who would be involved? To obtain certification, it is done through a group that's called ArbNet, which is essentially a group of individuals from established arboretum across the United States. The Morton Arboretum is the main coordinator, if you will, of ArbNet, and I've been in touch with the individual at the arboretum to understand how it works. You have to fill out an application, seven pages long, and I've included in the packet the main criteria that you have to meet to be an arboretum. And if you look at that main criteria, and I can address any of the questions on it, with a little bit of crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, I believe we have most of the requirements already met. You may know that Oak Park has already received certification as an arboretum. I've been in touch with their forester, and I understand the process that they went through, and I think we will have as similar and equal ability to obtain certification as they did. So what is involved? Well, we would first put tree tags. I would first highlight Guthrie Park, and we would put tree tags on the trees just in Guthrie Park. And there's an example of a picture of the tag. They're very small, and I'll pass one around as well. They would be similar to the ones that are used in arboretum today. They would just list the botanic name and the common name, and this would just be for Guthrie Park, not the whole part of Riverside at all. We would also have a virtual map. You may be aware that online right now on the Riverside, Village of Riverside website, there is an interactive map, and one of those layers shows all the trees throughout Riverside, where they are, and what their names are. What we would do for the trees in Guthrie Park is enhance that data so you have a little bit more than just the name, the common name, and the botanical name. You would have some data such as I've shown on the snapshot that I included in Exhibit One, where if you click on the icon, you would get a pop-up that would include data such as, you know, some fun facts, the maturity of the tree, you would learn how old that tree is, you would have some environmental factors like how much CO2 is sequestered by the tree, how much water conservation is obtained just by this individual tree, and other data that we can put in. Again, this enhanced data I would do just for Guthrie Park. We would also have photos of the tree in different periods of the year, different seasons. You would see close-up of the leaves and the acorns and so forth, the room that they have. And then to obtain certification, as I said, we would fill out this application, seven-page application. So who would do this? Working, I've been talking with Public Works and the forester. It would be volunteers, myself, and I have some other volunteers who are here in the audience today. There's also an Eagle Scout who's interested in adopting this as part of his project. Responsibilities and costs, you can see there is some future potential. I could see working with the different grade schools to incorporate these trees and the data into lesson plans for them, perhaps have a connection with the library. But down to responsibilities and costs, participation in ArbNet is free. I will, you know, as I said, volunteers will put the tree tags up. I will volunteer my time to update the virtual map and get all the data in there. And we have a donor who will provide seed money for the tags in Guthrie Park, which is estimated to be between $500 and $1,000 to tag each tree. So that's my proposal, and I'd love to hear your questions and hope to get you enthused about the project.
Trustees, questions?
Will the tags, you were going through this, will they have a QR code or something that someone could put with their smartphone and get all this information up?
Right. It's a potential to have a QR code. We'd have to work with the vendor and see what they typically do. Anybody with a smartphone could go to the park right now because the trees have the GIS coordinates mapped to them by tree, so if they're standing right there, they could see which tree it is. But a QR code might also help, or at least a link telling where this data is on the, where the website is.
Any questions?
Kathy, would you like to pass around the tags so that everyone can see it? I heard this presentation, participating in the Landscape Advisory Commission meeting. I think it's a very worthy proposal. I think it would be great. I mean, I love trees, and I don't know that much about them, you know? And it embarrasses me sometimes to sit at the Landscape Advisory Commission meeting, and I learn something every time. And I'm so, so happy that we have citizens like Ms. Maloney and others who are willing to do this as a volunteer. I think that's great.
And just along those lines, I do want the trustees and the public to know that the LAC has, has strong support for this project.
Yes, we have approved it. And the sample that's going around, we wouldn't have as much data on it, that has a lot of data on it. We would just, I propose, have a common name and Latin name.
You said that there was potential for some cost down the road. Is that what you said?
I think the only cost would be in terms of maintenance of the tags. So, you know, if you, let's just estimate 10% each year of maybe some damage to the tags or something like that. So that would be about $100 a year to maintain the tags in terms of material cost.
Well, I think, I really am excited by this prospect, and as you and I spoke about, it's very much in keeping with the board's overall attempt to try to reinvigorate Riverside as a natural area, and it seems to me it fits in well with the scout cabin, the trail that we're doing over in Indian Gardens, and this would be a perfect complement for that overall project. Ms. Hamilton?
I also think, wouldn't it have been great to be, when you were walking around Rawl last weekend, to be able to see the names on the trees? Or any other event we have in Guthrie.
So, Mr. Malina, in terms of process, would this just be a matter of consensus of the board to encourage this to move forward?
Yeah, at this point, it would. I presume that the form will be filled out by the volunteers, but ultimately, when it's filled out, I think it should come back before the board so that the board can, by motion,
formally adopt the application, and that it truly can be submitted on behalf of the
village.
So I believe, looking around, I think that you have unanimous support for this, and we're very appreciative of your efforts regarding this.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Malina. Next up, we have a presentation by an Eagle Scout, her project is at the Scout Cabin. And is it Lulich or Lulich?
Lulich.
Lulich, Ben Lulich. He, just so you're aware, he's been quite, through quite a process with this. He's already made this presentation to the Landscape Advisory Commission, the Preservation Commission, and the Parks and Recreation Board, and he is here tonight to now present this, this project to the Board of Trustees. Mr. Lulich.
So, hi, my name is Ben Lulich. I'm a freshman at Fenwick High School, and I'm on the swim and water polo team there. Oh, thank you very much.
Jessica, could you give him a hand with the?
That's a lot of edges, Ben.
While Mr. Lulich is passing those out, I should also let the folks at home know that we have, we have a Cub Scout troop here tonight, PAC 24, dead six, so they're getting to see what they can grow up to be here. Let me see, Mr. Lulich.
So, hi, my name is Ben Lulich. I'm a freshman at Fenwick High School, and I'm on the swim and water polo team. I'm currently a Life Scout at Troop 24 in Riverside, and I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak today. My project is intended to give pleasure to the residents of Riverside, use the Scout Cabin recreationally, and to provide a safe area for campfire. This project is also to progress my rank towards Eagle Scout by helping the community. So, the Eagle Scout project, I'm here today to propose and ask your approval to build a fire pit at the recreational Scout Cabin in Riverside for my Eagle project. Only 5% of all Scouts achieve the Eagle Scout rank, and the Eagle Scout is the highest rank in scouting. The Eagle project is my, one of, the Eagle project is one of the requirements to achieve the Eagle rank. The Eagle project is a service project, the Scout must direct, that directly benefits the community. The Scout must plan and execute the project with a minimum of two others, and the Scout must work as, with the community beneficiary. And at this time, I would like to thank Mr. Malkyody for assisting me in my project. So why a fire pit? I came up with this idea when the Boy Scouts were holding a flag retirement ceremony at the Scout Cabin with the Cub Scouts. We were using a portable fire pit at the time, and the Cub Scouts were getting too close, and it seemed like an unsafe situation. And this is how I came up with my idea to build a fire pit. So what I would need to do is prepare a proposal for the Boy Scouts and receive approval from beneficiary and local council, which I have already done. I must receive all permits necessary, finalize a plan with beneficiary pursuant to Boy Scout guidelines, and execute a plan, and prepare a final report. The village rules in Riverside is a fire pit must be 15 feet from any building, have a spark cover, and you must have a hardscape permit to build it. Meetings I've attended so far, I've met with the Parks and Recreation Board, I've submitted my hardscape permit, I've met with the Preservation Commission, and met with the Landscape Advisory Commission. They all really like the round and natural-looking fire pit. The location, of course, would be at the Scout Cabin. I've included a visual. It is the location I've picked out with Mr. Malkyody and the day camp director is 15 feet from the Scout Cabin in a flat area where there's no flooding and there isn't any grass. And this is a view from the porch of the Scout Cabin. You could see in yellow, there's the safe area between those three trees, and the black ring is where the fire pit will be. Fire pit design, I would like it to be round, not too big, 36 inches in the inside, there's a typo in there, my bad, a limestone appearance to match Burlington project, a spark cover and security of the same, fabric cover or a tarp, and an outside border with paver and gravel to match it. Here's a picture of what I was looking at, and I've been passing a brick around, you can see it at the corner, that would be the kind of brick that would be used in the fire pit, same color. And these are the dimensions of it. It's 14 inches high, 36 inches in diameter, and 50 inches in the outside diameter. Now, I was looking to surround my fire pit with gravel and pavers. I would use edgers for the outside perimeter, and then gravel circumferencing the fire pit. These would also be from Menards and, and match the fire pit. All the labor will be provided by Scout leaders and Scouts, and volunteer adults and high school students. The project will take four to seven Scouts and two to three adults per shift. The project will take one long weekend to complete, Friday to dig and level the ground prep and work, and on Saturday and Sunday, I'd build the fire pit, which would take four hours with two shifts on each of those days. And for safety, I'd like to include a snuff cover, a spark screen, and a cover over the fire pit. And the pricing would be a total of $883, including the kit, edgers, gravel, snuff cover, spark cover, fabric, and delivery. And I could work out the pricing with Mr. Malkyody and the Parks and Recreation Board. For approval, I'm asking the Board of Trustees to find the proposal complies with the village rules and is in the public interest. I'm asking the Board of Trustees to approve and issue the hardscape permit.
Questions or comments?
Thank you, President. It seems to me that when you presented before the Landscape Advisory Committee, you told us something about, I think maybe the cover might be able to be locked to the pit itself. Is that correct?
Yes, I could have a post with a metal bend in it, so I could secure the spark screen, which would be secured to the fire pit itself, so nobody who's unauthorized can.
Okay, all right. I think that's important.
Other comments or questions, Mr. Lulich?
Ben, how, how deep into the ground is it, and how far above the ground is it protrude?
It is, the fire pit itself is 14 inches high, but it should be dug like one and a half, two, two inches into the ground for security. Yeah, and edgers with the gravel would be deeper on the outside.
I'm not sure if this is a question for Ben or for? Who would be allowed to use this? How would we? I assume that would be run through the Parks and Rec Department, the way I know the usage for the?
It would be part of the rental for these cabins. You'd have to have permission to use the cabin to use the fire pit. It's not just.
Similar to how they use the grill?
Yeah, they have the grill.
Okay.
Same idea.
Okay.
Grills covered, unless you're a renter. That's the reason for the lock.
Yeah, the lock is important.
Other questions or comments? Do I see a consensus to approve this permit?
I think it's great that we were getting all these improvements from all of our fine citizens, so thank you.
Future leaders. Thank you very much, Mr. Lulich.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing the pit, and we'll come out, and you can have the inaugural fire pit, break the board out.
Thank you very much.
Smores.
Thank you very much. Smores, all right. Would anyone else like to address the board, see? Seeing none? We'll move on to reports of, yes?
Hi, I'm Annie Jackson, from Lowell Homestead Road, and I wanted to come and thank the board for your support of the Second Annual Winter Market, which just finished, and I'm here to promote the Summer Farmers Market. The Summer Market will run Wednesday, June 3rd through October 14th, from 2:30 to 7:00 in our traditional spot between the Village Hall and the Public Library. And for those who have never attended, I just wanted to explain why we're in that location. We do get questions from our annual survey as to why we don't hold it in the parking lot near Solon Diamore, and the reason being, if we fill that, one, one consistent complaint we get is parking in general. Where am I supposed to park? And I don't think people are thinking, if we fill that lot up with vendors, there'll be no parking there either. But we're also required to provide shelter for our vendors should the weather turn poor, and we have that here with both the Town Hall and the library. We also need to provide them with facilities, which we do not have over there in that lot. So this really is the perfect location for the Farmers Market. We will have 25 to 30 vendors this year, depending upon the week. Probably about three-quarters are returning from last year, so that gives us quite a bit of new vendors. We're in the enviable position of people, I get an application at least one a week, and we stopped accepting applications in early April. We were full by then, so we're a sought-after market, which is wonderful. We are adding two new farmers this year, so that brings us to a total of six, so out of our 25 to 30 vendors, six are farmers, which is wonderful. I'm hearing from fellow market managers in other communities, they're, they're popping up so frequently now that there just aren't enough farmers to go around, so it's nice that farmers are seeking us out. We require the farmers grow what they sell, so we're a growers-only market, and that's why you'll find at the beginning this year that things will be a little slow because there's pretty much only rhubarb out there and asparagus, so probably after three or four weeks, we'll be going full force. We are partnering again with Riverside Foods. It's really important to us as a committee that we support our local businesses, and we would never want to detract from their business, so we've offered them to come as often as they like and promote Riverside Foods and what they bring to the community, and we promote them regularly ourselves, and they'll be there probably once, one to two times a month, they'll be joining us. And from those who shop the market regularly, you may have noticed that they regularly take vendors from our market and carry their products there, so it's been a good partnership with them. This is our second year, thanks to President Salz, that we're partnering with the Riverside Parks and Rec Department. Prior to that, Kathy Haley was handling all of that for us on a volunteer basis, but we've kind of professionalized it a little more now, and through the support in particular of Annie over at Parks and Rec, we really have a rhythm going. She does a ton of heavy lifting for us. One thing in particular that as a resident I'm happy about is that we require that all of our vendors have liability insurance, which is why some can't meet that criteria and can't join us, but it's mandatory for our vendors, and I know from many other markets they don't require that. So as a resident, that makes me very happy to know that we are requiring insurance of our vendors. What else? We are partnering again with the Riverside Public Library. They're integral to our success. They run their summer reading program through the market. This year, they're doing a WRPL radio station that they're going to run every week at the market. They'll have live music, they'll be recording the music, I think they'll be posting it on their library website and on their Facebook page. So every year, they outdo themselves, and that continues to draw family, and families and residents to the market to discover it, and to kind of convene and see their neighbors, and we found that it's really become a nice gathering place for residents. We are also trying to partner with the River, the township food pantry. We're trying to work something out where we could have township residents who use, utilize the pantry, may be able to come to the market and get fresh produce, because right now the pantry does not have refrigeration as an option, so anything that's perishable is not an option. They only have shelf-stable items. So we're trying to work behind the scenes to see if there's any way that we could allow those same people who patronize the food pantry to walk away with fresh produce or meats, eggs, that kind of thing. Anything that our pan, our food pantry cannot offer, we'd like to supplement. So that's something we're doing right now behind the scenes. What else? I guess I'd just like to recognize the rest of the committee, because we are a small but mighty committee, and every year when I come to talk to you guys, I forget everybody's names, so this is the first year I've written everybody down. So I want to thank Kim Bolton, Janice Foley, Helen Gallagher, Deb Garman, Kathy Haley, Mary Comperata, Christine Leagin, Sue Piple, and Dorothy Sikora. So I hope I see you guys out there. I know Ben will arm wrestle you for eggs if he needs to. He's there every week with eggs and bread, and I hope I get to see some of the other trustees patronize and at least come out and see what's going on down here. It's a great thing.
It reminds me of the first one.
It's Wednesday, June 3rd, so about two weeks from now. So we've got a lot going on. It's going to be a great year, another great year.
It's wonderful that you and the committee do this. We really appreciate your work.
Yeah, and, oh, it's my pleasure. Most farmers' markets have paid market managers, so we really do a lot with little, and it's our pleasure. It's our pleasure, so. Any questions before I?
Pizza vendor is back?
Pizza vendor will be back. Pizza vendor will be back, so. All right, thank you again for your support. We couldn't do it without you guys, so.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Moving on to reports of village officers. First up is the village president's report. The only two items I had this evening are appointments. The first is to appoint Paul Cuchara as chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term 2015 to 2016. As many of you know, Mr. Cuchara is a longtime member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and brings a wealth of expertise and knowledge to this position, so I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Second by Ms. Hamilton, second by Mr. Ballerine. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is an appointment of Greg Randall to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill a vacancy, term to expire 2017. This is the term that has been vacated by Mr. Setteby's election to the village board. I see that your PAC, your posse deserted you. Greg is also, is also the PAC leader for the Cub Scouts who were just here. So I'd ask for a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Randall.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Collins.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lumsden. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries, and Mr. Randall is here with us tonight, so Ms. Haley, I'd ask you to please swear him in.
I, Gregory Randall, do solemnly swear.
I, Gregory Randall, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
Of the Office of Planning and Zoning Commissioner.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
For the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. I need your signature, please.
Mr. Randall, I do welcome aboard. Did the trustees have any comments, or? Nope, thank you very much. That is all I have. Next up is the village manager's report. There is an item on the consent agenda that I'm gonna ask Manager Francis to also discuss, which is the sewer interceptor project. So given her discussion here, maybe we could just leave it on the consent agenda unless there are other questions about it, so Ms. Francis.
Sure. First, I'll start with the two less lengthier updates. I just wanted to give a quick update with regard to the First Avenue improvements. It's anticipated that by mid-June, the new signals will be activated and the temporary ones will be removed, the landscaping has been completed, and staff is in the process of submitting the request to IDOT for the installation of the speed indicator, which was discussed at a previous board meeting, and staff will continue to provide updates to the village board with regard to status of that, because we have to get clearance in order to install it on First Avenue first, before we move forward on that. Also, I wanted to give an update with regard to the refuse transition. Next week will actually be the last week in which Republic Services will be providing services to the Village of Riverside, the final date for refuse collection will be Wednesday, May 27th, 2015, the usual Tuesday collection will be delayed one day due to the Memorial Holiday. After June 1st, refuse and recycling and yard waste collection will take place on Thursdays, and this will be done by Flood Brothers. Many of our residents, if not, I would be surprised if not all of our residents have received contact from Flood Brothers, mailers, mailings, et cetera. It's important to note that the refuse carts will be collected by Republic Services on their final day of collection, and Flood Brothers plans to deploy the new carts to residents that same date. However, it's also important to note that if your cart is not picked up on Wednesday, please leave it out at the curb, and Republic will pick it up the following date. There may be some issues with regard to getting a number of trucks through the village to make sure that all the carts are picked up, so if for some reason you notice that on that Tuesday, that it's, or rather Wednesday, that it's not picked up, leave it at the curb, and they will pick it up. Once you have a Flood Brothers cart, you can go ahead and pull it up your driveway and put it in its regular location. Also, if you have a yard waste receptacle, please contact the village and we will make sure that you get one from Flood Brothers, because that is a special service that not too many residents have requested, however, it is a service that Flood Brothers will provide. Additionally, if you notice that you have a Republic Services recycling container, those other recycling containers that do not have the village logo, also please contact the village, and we will make sure that you get a Flood Brothers recycling receptacle.
So before you move on then, let's just reinforce that, so May 27th is when everyone should put their existing containers out onto the curb.
Correct. And then the transition will begin.
Of course.
So with the yard waste receptacle, is there a cost to that?
There is, it is, I believe, they're matching the same cost as.
So if someone wants the yard waste, they, that you know?
They, they, let us know, yes, and we'll make sure, we're compiling a list, because some of the data that Republic Services had was somewhat limited, so we want to ensure that all the residents get the proper receptacles that they need.
And if they don't use that, then they can still use the?
Their existing personal trash cans with the yard waste stickers are fine.
And the yard waste stickers can be obtained from the village?
Correct.
Okay.
You can, if it's already labeled still with existing yard, it's fine, it's if they need new ones where they get new receptacles and they need the new stickers.
Okay, and when you said that, I'm sorry, when you said that the date was Thursday for pickup from now on, did you, did you leave out the recycling? I didn't hear you say recycle will be picked up, are they picked up on the same day?
Same day.
Okay, so all is picked up on Thursday?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
For residential, for commercial, it's a little bit different, and Flood Brothers is coordinating with commercial separately.
Okay, alright, thank you.
With regard to the interceptor construction, as part of the packet, and just an update to the village board, back in 2010, late 2010, the board at that time approved a resolution allowing 24-hour per day, seven days a week, very, allowing essentially construction during that time. There is a main sewer for MWRD that runs through Riverside that is deteriorating, and finally, MWRD has received sufficient funding to go ahead and make repairs to the interceptor along with various other areas that come into Riverside within other communities. So this project, actually in totality, will take over 1,000 days for them to complete. The smaller sections in Riverside will take place in late 2016. This project, before MWRD can even go out to bid, they need this, this particular resolution from the village to then even submit it to go to bid. They anticipate basically going in, I believe it was in the fall slash early, or in the fall for bid, for it to be awarded in late 2015 for work to start in 2016. Riverside will be minimally impacted in 2016, it will really be in 27, the latter part of 2017 and 2018 is what they're anticipating for them to be coming into Riverside. There's been oversight and review by our village engineer and continued discussions with our village engineer to make sure that any improvements that we're doing is not counter to what they'll be coming in, because they will have to cut within the village infrastructure to gain access to the, the structure to reline, I believe it's seven feet by seven feet. So the village is working collaboratively with MWRD, but this will be something that will then, this will need to be approved prior to them even sending it out to bid. The reason why it never took place in, starting in 2011, was because the funding that they were supposed to receive, they actually, the funding was lost. And so now that they're starting it back up, and it appears that everything is on track to be completed by 2018.
And this has been another, another benefit that we've had from the sewer study that we, that we've accomplished with our village engineer, so it allows us to coordinate with this very significant project. Are there any questions about this before we move on?
Where, where is the impact gonna be in town? Is this, the sewer runs, it runs under the river, am I correct?
There are multiple sites, no, it's not under the river, I mean, it will, and Director Bailey is here, so he can probably even provide additional commentary, but it goes through various portions of our village, probably the main hub being over here by Riverside Road and Long Common, correct?
The intercepting sewer, it's called, MWRD calls it the Salt Creek Intercepting Sewer. It begins somewhat north of Riverside, I don't know exactly where it begins right off hand, but it basically enters Riverside at the intersection of First Avenue and Forest, and is part of this traffic signal intersection project, as you recall, it was, it was delayed for this excavation. That's why it was delayed, is because they were doing this drop shaft in advance of doing the traffic signal project, so they wouldn't, as the village manager suggested, he wouldn't go back and tear up something that was just installed. So that's an example of some pre-planning. It comes down Forest Avenue, to Long Common, goes underneath the railroad tracks, and follows Riverside Road out through Miller Road to Ogden Avenue, and then the wastewater goes to the Stickney Wastewater Treatment Plant. It, all wastewater from the Village of Riverside goes into this seven-foot diameter sewer, whether it's from the south of it or the north of it, all ends up there as well as bringing wastewater from further north. So it's a, you know, it's a significant structure, very important to the village, obviously, from the standpoint of maintaining its integrity, and it's some years, some years out, obviously, but, and there'll be different sections where sometimes they'll be accessing the interceptor through existing manholes, other times they'll be creating drop shafts.
Is this the drop shaft that's on the corner of Oldstead and Riverside Road where there are sometimes?
It's part of, yeah, there's massive amounts of MWRD infrastructure in the village, and you know, there's a tarp that's connect, interconnected to the tunnel system also. So it's, there's a lot of plumbing, significant plumbing around and underneath Riverside. And there'll be detours, you know, obviously when this equipment is operating or they're constructing these drop shafts, there'll be detours, that's all part of the plan though.
I heard 16, 17, 18, it's, this is not gonna be sequential, or how, how long do we think will be impacted by this work?
The, I believe, like the village manager suggested, the entire project for the MWRD is 1,000 days. I believe the actual amount of working days in Riverside is 65. You know, the contractor, 65 days to complete their work. And apparently, they're starting way upstream at the very beginning, or work their way down, but I don't know, you know, I'm not that intimately aware of the project, it, I don't, I know they're, they're full scale, but it's apparent that Riverside's at the bottom end, at the last end of the entire project. And it could be, you know, obviously, there's things that could influence the pace of the project, weather, so on and so forth, but it's a significant project, because they'll also be bypassing the wastewater while they're doing this curing in place, so that's, you know, it'll be an interesting project, but probably create some amount of inconvenience for sure, for motorists.
And as we get to various phases, of course, the village will make sure that our residents are fully informed about what's coming.
And as I understand it, the project as it impacts Riverside is really a relining.
That's what it is.
And so the, the main impact, I think, will be the rerouting of traffic because of the staging for this.
Correct.
But there won't be, I mean, it's not as if we're going to have giant excavations, because they're actually going to be forcing this flexible material down and then curing it in place.
Correct. Okay, moving on now to the approval of the consent agenda, are there any items that any trustee needs to have removed for discussion? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Pollak, please call the roll.
Trustee Ballen.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is a discussion of a hardscape permit application for 122 Nuttall. This involves an address monument sign. Who is going to present this?
I can present it.
Ms. Francis.
With regard to the hardscape permit, it was, the village was notified that there was a monument sign installed on Village Rightof Way, we actually had the building department go out, and it was verified that it was in fact on village property. Director Bailey then sent notification to the residents at 122 Nuttall, informing them that they needed to apply for a hardscape permit. They then did so and went through the various commissions, Landscape Advisory Commission and also Preservation Commission. It's important to note that Landscape Advisory Commission recommended that the board approve the hardscape permit, whereas Preservation Commission did not recommend. And based on the findings of the Preservation Commission, staff is not recommending approval of the monument sign.
So this is a discussion item only? So what do you think?
I'd like to understand how in the standoff between Preservation and LAC, the staff came down on the side of Preservation. I'd like an explanation of that.
And, and there was actually some additional discussion that's been had with regard to it. First of all, it was, it was constructed without a permit, which, which is problematic. We don't want people erecting things within the Village Rightof Way without getting approval. So in effect, this whole issue could have been circumvented if the contractor would have come into the village. Additionally, it is an obstruction, and with regard to Preservation, obviously, we always err on the side of caution with the character of the community.
I don't understand what it's an obstruction to. I mean, I've looked at the picture, there's, it's not an obstruction to the sidewalk, there's landscaping all around it, I don't understand what it is an obstruction to.
It, it, it's intrusive, we don't allow, I mean, if you essentially take the address portion off of it, it's a wall in, in the front yard, similar to a fence, we don't allow residents to erect walls on the front of their property.
It's a broken new sideline, is what they're talking about, it's obstructing your view down the street type of thing, that's probably what Preservation's issue was, would be my guess.
The, the sign, or monument sign, sits back about 45 inches off the sidewalk. So, I mean, I can understand a resident not thinking that, you know, four feet off of the sidewalk is actually village property, because, I mean, we have our, the way our, you know, our, our leeways go are all over the place. You know, I drove around the last couple of days, and, I mean, just between here, my house, or even his house, and getting out of town, I counted 15 of those. I mean, walls that are, that are raised planting beds, monument signs with other addresses on it, geez, the Coonley planters are on village property. I, I just think it's gonna be awfully hard, and I, I, I believe that, yes, he should've got a permit, I could see how he would think he wouldn't need one because of where it is, but ignorance is, is not a reason for the law, so I think he needs to be, that needs to be handled, but I wouldn't support having him tear that, that out unless we're willing to walk up and down the street and ask everyone that has planters at the edge of their sidewalks, everyone that has stone walls, I've seen, I saw at least a dozen of those today. There are some very prominent houses all along Scottswood, Blooming Bank, I mean, quite a, quite a, quite a number of them, and it would be a monumental task to go around and ask all those people to remove that, and I think that would be, happen to be the fair thing to do. Monumental task.
If, if this did not, wasn't, not a parkway issue, would that require a permit to have built that?
Would they have to come in to get it, yes.
So there would, there should have been a permit regardless of whether it was a parkway issue?
Correct, if they would have come in, then the existing sign would have been approximately 50 feet back from its current location, which obviously, 55.
But to build a, a line type thing like this in itself requires a permit?
Correct.
Okay.
If it was their property, you would have, you would permit and a variation because of the setback required.
Yes. I, I certainly realize there's a number of obstructions in the rights of way in this village. From my experience, and I didn't get a chance to go around today or yesterday and look at, at these kinds of things, but my recollection is that most of them are pretty old, like the Coonley Estate, where it's been there for 75 years or more. And it's probably fair to say that they were somehow legally established.
I would tend to disagree with, yes, there are a few of them are old, but there's not even a brand yet.
Just some new ones too, I, I don't know, I, I, as I said, that was just my, my recollection, but.
Especially raised planter beds.
But that's, it's, I, I know these, these legally, or these, these non-conforming structures like this, you never know quite how they got there. I mean, they either, maybe they, someone built them and no one ever complained, and the village never noticed, or they've been there for a number of years. Maybe they were there when the village allowed that type of thing, or turned its back on it, I don't know. My concern with this is that if we approve this, then it seems only fair that we should say to everyone else in this village that you can do the same thing. That every, I mean, why should this property be allowed to have this monument and no one else is allowed to do it? and no one else is allowed to do it? So having said that, if we allow this and then we say, okay, we're going to allow these types of structures, what does that do to our village? I mean, do we now, if, imagine, certainly not everybody's going to do this, but you would assume a good number of people will. And is that a positive for the village or negative or neutral? I kind of think it's probably a negative. If you were to suddenly see these large monuments, walls in the front yard of one-third or to half the properties in the village, I, I could see that being a real, real, real problem, especially when we don't allow fences or walls in front yards at all, even on private property. And we've held that line pretty well. Certainly, there are non-conforming structures out there, but if someone would come to us and say, I want to build a wall in my front yard, I'm pretty confident that the Planning and Zoning Commission would recommend against that. And I'm pretty confident, I mean, every, the case is unique, but I'm pretty confident that I at least would, would oppose that. So if we approve this, what are we saying? Are we approving it because it's already there? In which case, we're saying it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission? We don't want that message out there, that's for sure. So I, I have real concerns about this, both because of the fact it's already there, but primarily because I'm concerned that this sets a precedent and, and, you know, we, we give our blessing to this, then I feel like, you know, how could we say no to anyone else and we should actually amend the code to allow this? So I, I, I have real concerns with it.
And are we prepared to go back and to all the homes that have erected something in the last ten years and tell them to remove it? I mean.
I don't, I don't feel that's necessary, but if, if.
Just because someone didn't call on a house on one place and someone called on this house, I mean, that's not, that's not fair either. So if, if, you know, I understand exactly what you're saying, we, and I, but I do not agree with the fact that if we allow this, then we're going to get a rush of, you know, three thousand residents putting up monument signs in their front yards. But if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna cut one way, you're gonna have to cut the other way. So if you say no, he's gonna have to take this down or move it, then you're gonna have to do a inventory of these, these type of structures and, and have that same thing gone through the whole village. Because there's some.
Trustee Ballerine, I don't agree with that statement. I mean, I think that there, apparently, this was brought to the attention by the village through a complaint, I'm presuming. I do think it establishes a, a, a bad precedent to allow it. I would be very sympathetic, I guess, if the matter were moving it back three feet or four feet or wherever the lot line is, but again, my understanding is, there's a setback requirement for that is fifty feet. So I do think it establishes a dangerous precedent. I don't think it obligates us to take an inventory. Certainly, if other people come forward with complaints, they need to be responded to and it's the burden of the other homeowners to establish they are legally non-conforming and we can address it on a case-by-case basis. But unfortunately, I, I, if the resident was aware of it, I'm surprised that the, the builder installer wasn't aware of our requirements, so.
I really struggle with this. My first thought is, it's already there, it looks fine, leave it. My second thought is, if Jean were here, she would not like this. And I have to kind of think along her lines on this, that I do think it sets a bad precedent, that as long as you have done it, then we're gonna let it slide afterwards. And as much as I hate to say it, I am not in favor of leaving it.
So we have one who would leave it and three who would take it down. Mr. Lumsden and Ms. Hamilton?
The fact that they didn't follow the process to get the, to, to get it done properly because then it wouldn't have put us in this position, right?
I don't like these, these choices.
Ms. Hamilton?
Well, first of all, I believe that if we're going to make a decision on the basis of it being punitive, then we shouldn't have even had sent them to Preservation or, or Landscape Advisory. If, if we're going to make a decision on the basis of it being punitive, then we should just be punitive, let's face it. I don't see anything wrong with it where it is. And I think Landscape Advisory gave it a very thorough look and thought that it was appropriate to the style of the house, appropriate to the style of the lot, and that it contributed to the beauty of the location. In addition to which, it's difficult to see what the address of that house is without that, without that address wall in front of the house. So I would not vote to make him take it down.
I do agree that we should not base this decision on being punitive. I, I hundred percent agree with that. We should treat this, and I've dealt with these types of, of issues before where something's already built, didn't get a permit, then they come back and ask permission later. And I've always said, I feel very strongly about this, we should evaluate this on its own merits, period. Not on the fact that it's there, they should not get a benefit from the fact that it's there, nor they should be, should they be punished by the fact that it's there. We should view it on its own merits, and if its own merits say it's, it's okay, then we should approve it. If its own, if the merits of the, of the request, let's pretend it's not there. If they just came to us and said, I want to build this monument in the public right-of-way and, and, and I want the village to give me permission for that, what would you say? I would say no. And so that's the basis of my, my thought, my thinking on it.
Well, and to, and to expand on that, even if they, even if they came and said that they wanted to build what they built on their property, not on the parkway, under our, under our existing ordinance, it would have to be, have a setback of fifty feet. So they would have to meet the variance requirements in, in order to even build it on their own property, unless they were to go back fifty feet. So the, so to follow from Mr. Pollak's question is, in your opinion, would they be able to withstand the standards for variation?
Fifty or fifteen?
Fifty.
Five, zero.
It has to be in line with the front of the house. If they were to come in to request for a permit, it would have to be in line with the front of the house.
Or they would have to do a variance to be forward.
Or they, if they have a variation, they should show hardship. That would be a challenge for other.
Attorney Molina says, having been involved with the planning commission, it would be very hard to establish a hardship there. So then the next step would be, as Trustee Ballerine said, if this is something we're all comfortable with and it happens throughout the village, then you have to go the text amendment route, I would say, to evaluate that. But that's probably the proper process.
All right, so the consensus of the board then is to follow the staff recommendation and to not allow the hardscape permit? Next up is a generalized discussion.
What place the next up next? Is that a step on that?
I assume the next step will be that they'll be, they'll be notified that they need to remove the sign. Is that correct, Mr. Molina?
Yes, without a, without a, without a desire to prepare ordinance to allow it, it's, it dies.
And the consensus was more to.
Okay, I wanted to make a motion to, to make a, a ordinance to allow it. Oh, to give, would be a, a motion to give direction to allow it? Yeah, you, you could do that. I mean, it's, it wouldn't be final action because we'd still have to bring the ordinance back. I would recommend that if there's a desire to approve this, legally, you have an issue with it knowingly being in your right-of-way, that you should also require indemnification from the property owner, because it really is, it's on your property. Someone were to get hurt there, they look and see where the property line is, the village would be the defendant if they try to allege any kind of hazardous condition due to its, you know, whatever.
If a guy's off the sidewalk, bumps into it, splits his head open, they're gonna come back to the village, right? Without paid indemnity.
So you, we would require, I would recommend you, if you do allow it, you, you require that. Unlike some things, you know, you may have other obstructions, but you don't know that. You don't know where you are. You know it, so you shouldn't let it go if you promptly approve it. Would be my suggestion. Then I would like to do that. You just tell me how I need to say that. An ordinance to allow that, seeking the indemnity that we would need in order to. The, the motion would be to direct staff, it's with staff and us, to prepare an ordinance that would allow this to exist in, in the right-of-way at its current location and also subject condition on receiving indemnification of the property owner to prepare those documents because they're fairly common. They're, they're common in a lot of areas where people like to have stricker systems at the parkway, so usually there's an indemnification of wiring, but, or, or you made that motion.
But this would require a variation.
No, because you're allowing it to be, it's on your property. You don't allow variation, you know, that's, that assumes it's on your own property. It's not really subject to any setback requirements because it's right in the right-of-way. And, and I would also like to add that any legal fees that will be to, that will be incurred by this work would have to be borne by the property owner. Can I do that? Yeah. It's a unique situation. No, I mean, the situ, from, under your code, it's a unique situation. Does that be in the motion or in the, the? Okay, the motion would be to direct staff to prepare an ordinance that allows the sign that is already in existence to remain where it is in the village's right-of-way, conditioned on appropriate indemnification of the village by the property owner who owns the sign, and also a condition on reimbursement to the village for any professional consulting fees that are incurred to begin the process.
Man, motion by Ms. Ballerine?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hamilton. Heard the discussion? Please call the roll.
Everyone question?
Yes, sir.
Would they?
If you're, you need to.
Sure. Sorry. In the process of allowing this and requiring them to indemnify the village, would it be smart to require them to carry something in their liability insurance to cover any accidents or something related specifically to this part of the?
You could add that as a requirement. I don't know how you, what kind of insurance you get. I don't think it's commercially available, so. You know, you have to get liability insurance for something in the right-of-way. It's not, your homeowners would cover it because it's not on your property?
Well, that's, I guess, my question.
Yeah, no, that.
Because even though they indemnify.
Right, it doesn't, the money's there to pay.
Sure, right. So it does happen, something could, so it's a building to.
But I mean, that's, that's always the issue with these. It is common to allow them with indemnification, but to get special, you'd have to get some kind of special rider. I don't know if you could get it.
Okay, please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine?
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
No.
Trustee Pollak?
No.
Trustee Settiby?
No.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
President Sells?
So next up is a consideration of an alternate meeting schedule. We've, we've been contacted by a number of the commission and board chairs regarding kind of the onerous monthly meeting schedules that, that our commissions and boards are, are going through. And I believe that I'm correct, that we, we post our scheduling at the first of every year. So at this point, we're pretty much locked in to, to the monthly schedule. So if, if a board or commission doesn't want to meet in a given month, they would just have to make a motion, you know, or just, you know, to, to call off the meeting. But looking forward for the future, the, the suggestion was to go to every other month meetings for all of the commissions except for the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is a statutorily created commission. They would retain their monthly meetings. The only other commission that, that there was some discussion about leaving monthly was the Preservation Commission, because under our ordinance, there is a thirty-day window if somebody submits an application to be reviewed by the Preservation Commission. They could handle that, of course, by calling a special meeting if they wanted to, or we could look at extending that thirty-day limit to a sixty-day limit. So the question is, is do you think it's a good idea to experiment in next year with going to an every other month meeting schedule?
And how, how many applications does Preservation get any year? I mean, how likely is it that we'd have to extend that or change that? They get a lot of applications?
In, in the past few months, yes. There's been a lot of tear downs, a lot of construction activity, and so they've had a pretty full agenda the last three months. That's not to say that that wouldn't taper off, but as it stands right now, they have a very robust agenda.
So they may be calling special meetings on a fairly regular basis for a while?
And potentially be just during construction season when they're looking for applications to be approved.
But it would give them the flexibility if their agendas were not full to not have to meet on a monthly basis.
Correct.
And the, and the, kind of the converse of that is, I know, I know the Economic Development Commission have, have several projects that are very active right now. Even if they had an every other month schedule, they can always call a special meeting. If they had some particular project that they felt the need to be, or, or on.
It just needs to be posted.
It would need to be posted. I mean, really, the, one of the considerations that, that we also should think about is, is the attempt to get volunteers.
Yeah.
I mean, we do, we, we have several vacancies on our commissions right now, and one of the most common responses I hear from folks when I, when I'm trying to seek out new commissioners is, is the burden of having monthly meetings. A lot, especially a lot of younger families, they just, they simply can't commit to that kind of schedule.
I think it's also a burden to staff, too.
It's a burden to staff, it's a burden to trustees, because you're, you all, you all have commission liaison assignments. Mr. Pollak, you, you had a comment?
Well, you answered my, my question, my, which was, what is the benefit of this? I, I'm fine with it. I, I guess I would, all things being equal, I would rather leave it as is and cancel meetings rather than schedule special meetings. But if you think it's going to draw more people into, into volunteering, I'm all for that and I'm willing to give that a try.
And I, I don't believe the, the monthly, that is not, that isn't codified. I mean, we could just make, we could just make this decision.
I, I don't know if it is.
I don't believe, I don't think it is.
Certainly change it if it is and just clean it up, but, but if it's not, it would just be a policy, you just would, you would just post a different schedule.
We could just try it and we could try it every year and see if it, if it works.
I know with the time that LAC does, where they're actually going out and doing inventorying and, you know, it requires a lot of time out walking in the parks and, and doing things like that. I think they would appreciate having extra time because that, you know, every four weeks rolls around pretty darn fast, you know?
And we've discussed this at length with the Recreation Board specifically, and they, they've talked about quarterly, we've, we've, it's kind of started the thought process there and, and came down to every other month and, and they're, they're very much in favor of this.
Okay, so it looks like we'll give it a try, twenty sixteen.
So for Economic Development, they didn't have a concern about this, so they could still have monthly meetings?
They could just have, they could have special, they, because right, they're, they're working right now on the marketing plan and, and some video work, so.
Right.
But their, their work tends to be project oriented, you know, so there might be periods where they would have to have more meetings than other downtime. Okay. Next up, new business, heard of anyone? We do not have a need for an executive session this evening, so I'd ask for a motion of second to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Collins. Second by Mr. Lumsden, please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine?
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Trustee Settiby?
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
We need it adjourned.